Okay, folks, we're going to call this meeting to order. It's now six o'clock on that clock, six at eight in my mind. If you could stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, adequate notice that this meeting is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 20, 2022 by posting a notice in the Fort Cora Post Office and the LaRocque Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Present.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Present.
Mrs. Downing?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Polino?
Here. Executive session.
I'd be resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, confidential personnel matters, confidential contract negotiations, or confidential contractual matters. The subject matters of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be approximately ninety minutes, which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:30. Action may be taken. Motion?
Move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, first session. Okay, folks, we're going to continue on to meeting. Good evening. What's that?
Can't hear you.
They can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good. Good evening. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes over. We just had to wrap things up in the other room. So, we're going to resume and start with our student representatives. There we are.
Hi, I'm Hannah Miller. I'm the SGA Executive Board President.
I'm Sophia Reed. I'm the Class of 2023 Vice President here on Jimmy's behalf. So, as far as ours news goes, the freshman news, Class of 2026, the advisor is Ms. Benusa. Meetings are in W108. Sophomore news, Class of 2025, the advisor is Ms. Taskin. Meetings are in the lecture hall. And the winter lawn sign sales, uh, sale signs will begin in December. Please check your email for more information then. Junior news, Class of 2024, the advisor is Ms. Dejean, and meetings are in A104. And senior news, Class of 2023, the advisor is Ms. Hoyt. Meetings are in A107. We are currently working on senior t-shirts, and information was sent to student emails for cap and gown orders.
Executive Board News, the advisor is Ms. York. Meetings are in the lecture hall. Members are instructed to check the SGA canvas for meeting minutes and volunteer opportunities. Thank you to all the students and staff that attended the Lacey Township Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th at the Lacey Town Hall. Homecoming was a huge success. Currently planning our annual Battle of the Classes to take place December 19th through the 20th. The next SGA meeting is Monday, December 5th in lecture hall at 1:45. At this time, we would like to invite Bennett Talbot up to the podium.
For the month of November, SGA chose Bennett Talbot as unsung hero. Bennett is a part of the marching band as a saxophone player and shows school spirit during the football games. During the winter and spring season, he actively participates in track and field, plays in band, and participates in anime club. He is also a part of the STEM Academy and always brings a positive attitude and smile to students' faces. He balances his AP workload along with other classes and continuously maintains a high class ranking. Through all of this, he is always there for his friends and family. Considering all of these outstanding qualities, we have no doubt that Bennett should be recognized as November's unsung hero. Congratulations.
That is all for the student representative portion.
Thank you, ladies. We're going to move on to Report of Superintendent, Dr. Perrin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Polino. Welcome to the November Board Meeting, and congratulations to Bennett. And Bennett, is your family here? Where's your family? Are they with you? Can you stand up and be recognized because he didn't do this all by himself? Congratulations. Before we move on, I do want to take a moment to have a moment of silence for the tragic passing of Callan Bischoff, who recently graduated from Southern Regional High School right here in Ocean County, and for the tragic death of four University of Idaho students who were killed this past weekend. Our thoughts and prayers go out to all of them, so a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, um, thank you to our student representatives. We always love having you here. Um, as I always do, thank you to our student artists for this month's board cover and superintendent's report designs. Savannah Ars, who's a fourth grade student at Lenoka Harbor, designed the cover of the board agenda, and Tessa Roma, also a fourth grade student at Lenoka Harbor, designed the cover of the superintendent's report. So, we're always happy when our artists provide us with their artwork. All right, we're going to get right to our seniors of the month and our staff members of the month, so, and I know Mr. King has another presentation to make tonight, so I'd like to invite Mr. King up to the podium. Oh, there he is. I was looking for you. You're always over there.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Perrin, Mr. Zelinski, Board of Education. Quite an audience, I appreciate that. Uh, this evening, we are going to celebrate our seniors of the month. Uh, one senior of the month is not here, so we're going to skip over that gentleman until next month, but our November Senior of the Month, the first one is Madeline Frisch. Madeline, come on down, please. A round of applause for her parents who are here this evening. We're going to take a moment and watch some of Madeline's accomplishments.
Hello. Once again, we're here to celebrate seniors of the month for the month of November. Our first senior of the month is Madeline Frisch.
I'm Madeline Frisch, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month for Lacey Township High School.
Congratulations on winning Senior of the Month. I am going to give you the corny round of applause.
I played volleyball for four years at Lacey, and I am the treasurer of NHS.
It's been fun to coach you and be with you on the girls' volleyball court for the last two seasons, where I have watched you blossom from a junior varsity-level middle hitter as a junior on varsity to our lead blocker, who Coach Sotero just told me is now in the top ten all-time for blocks in a career.
My favorite memory is playing volleyball.
Hey, one moment that really impressed me above all others was when you asked to come to the JV volleyball tournament with our JV squad to be that team mom and that senior leader, and just watching you go out there and not worried about how you're performing, which was great, but worried about how those around you were performing, how they were behaving, leading them, teaching them moments of how to step up in pressure, and watching you really take these younger girls and show them what leadership was about. It was really inspiring.
Everybody thinks that you're just so quiet, Madeline, but I know the real truth. All from those four classes that you've taken with me, I got you, baby girl.
Outside of school, I like to horseback ride.
Madeline, you deserve Senior of the Month because of your perseverance, your hard working, and your dedicated to your classes.
After high school, I plan to go to a four-year college and then go to medical school to become a radiologist.
Maddie, once again, congratulations. It is an honor well deserved. We are proud of you. We are right behind you, supporting you. Good luck with the rest of your senior year.
Okay. And phone, you have your phone? Oh, my God. That's crazy.
Where's the fire key?
This is crazy. Uh, he's up there.
Where? Okay, we're going to move on and continue. Nothing to see here. We're all good.
All right, if we could all take our places. Um, for those who don't know, that was a bit of excitement from the show that was going down in the auditorium. Uh, they have a smoke machine that's very, very real. It is, it's impressive to see. So, we're going to pick up where we left off as they pick up where they left off, and we'll keep going from there. So, a round of applause, please, for Madeline once again, as we started all this, all right? Madeline, you go down and get your, get your board, please. All right. Uh, our next senior of the month is the Ocean County Vocational Student of the Month, Kendall Evans. Kendall, come on down. Round of applause for Kendall's parents, please. Thank you. All right, Kendall, come on up. We're going to watch a short clip on Kendall's accomplishments as well.
Our Ocean County Votex Senior of the Month is Kendall Evans.
Hi, my name is Kendall Evans, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month.
Hi, I'm here this morning to congratulate Kendall Evans on being chosen as the Senior of the Month.
Even though I only had Kendall for one year, I see her every day. This school year, she comes for cookies or she comes for candy, and she also tells me how her day is going.
I'm on my third year of the girls' golf team, where we compete in competitions for varsity levels.
She is always looking out for other people. She is a conscientious, hard-working student, as well as a great teammate on the golf team.
My favorite memories of high school are having fun with my friends.
The funniest stories I could come up with are on the golf course, actually on the driving range, when Kendall would sit there and hit balls, and anytime she hit a good one, she'd always ask me if I saw it, and I would always say no, even if I did. And, uh, when she hit a bad shot, most of the time, it was my fault.
Outside of school, I love singing and playing guitar, and I also work with the Recreation Department over summer.
What sets you, Kendall, apart from everybody else is your dedication to wanting to be a dental hygienist. Your rapport with other students is phenomenal.
My future plans after high school is to go to Rowan at Burlington to become a dental hygienist.
Kendall, I wish you a lot of luck, a lot of success, and perhaps maybe you'll go to dentistry school, and then I don't have to worry about paying for a bill anymore. Good luck, keep in touch, and thank you for being one of my students.
Another round of applause for Kendall. All right. Uh, my next presentation is an Eagle Scout Award for Matthew Zemkowski. Matt, come on down. Round of applause for his parents who are in the audience. Thank you. As Dr. Perrin said, these students have not done it alone, they've done it with a lot of support and care all along the way. Uh, Matt is, has obtained the level award of Eagle Scout. I wanted to go over again the criteria to become an Eagle Scout. It is something that not everyone can achieve. Uh, first, they do need 21 merit badges in a variety of categories such as, let's see, we have the first aid, citizenship of community, citizenship of the nation, citizenship of the world, communication, cooking, personal, fitness, emergency preparedness or lifesaving, environmental science or sustainability, personal management, swimming or hiking or cycling, camping, and family life. Along with that, they have to show very many, many leadership roles throughout their journey to become an Eagle Scout, uh, by running troops, going to sessions, and working with scout masters both above and below as they, they go through their activities. Uh, finally, they need to develop, plan, and give a presentation or do a service project for the community, town, church, or school, which he certainly has accomplished. And finally, you do need to, while being a life scout, participate in scout master conference. So, Matthew has achieved all these things this year. It is an accomplishment. We need to applaud and award him. Uh, I'm very proud of you, sir. Nice job. All right, this plaque will be presented by Dr. Perrin. All right? Awesome. Nice job. That concludes my presentations. All right?
Okay, so as we have been doing every month, it's now time to present our staff members of the month. So, this month, uh, we're going to start with John Cox. Is he here with us tonight? I think I saw him. There you are, come on down. So, John, I'm just going to ask you to hang out here with me for a moment. Uh, John was nominated by middle school teacher Karen Badiya, um, and Mrs. Badiya had to say this about John. John comes to school every day and does his job as a custodian with enthusiasm. He is at every school dance, uh, dedicated to keeping things running smoothly. He is always busy cleaning, stocking supplies, moving equipment, and just helping others. He's dedicated to supporting everyone around him to the best of his ability and does so with an optimistic attitude and a smile on his face. You won't leave an interaction with John without a more positive outlook and a smile on your face. So, congratulations, John, on behalf of the Board of Education. Yeah, absolutely. And stay tuned, because we have a video. All right, hang out here for a moment. All right, and our next staff member of the month is High School Guidance Counselor Elise Winkle. Elise, are you here? There she is. And Elise was nominated by her colleague Peg Rand, and Mrs. Rand said this about Elise. Elise exemplifies each of the staff member of the month criteria in her daily interaction with students, especially regarding their mental health and welfare. Her role has expanded as students and their families recover post-COVID and a return to normal life. Elise's involvement with students promotes their health and well-being, both physically and mentally, and we can't think of someone more deserving than Elise for staff member of the month. So, congratulations. All right, and you know, as with every staff member of the month, we have a video. So, have you seen the video yet? Oh, here we go. All right.
Hey, John.
Hey, John.
Hey, John. I wanted to congratulate you on being named Faculty District Member of the Month for November. Congratulations.
Wow, thank you.
We have Mr. Badiya here, who actually initially, initially nominated you, and your daughter Murphy to, uh, join in our celebration, so congratulations.
You got it.
Yeah, congratulations.
I just wanted to nominate John for our employee of the month. He is, um, just such a ray of sunshine. You come into work, and he is just always so positive. He really enjoys his job. He tells you every day he's just happy to be here. You need anything, you reach out to him, he helps you out as fast as he can, and he just does it with a smile on his face, and it's just, he's just so positive. So, it's really nice to have somebody like that to come to work, and, you know, they're always smiling and happy to see you, and they just really love their job and love being here and helping others. So, congrats, John.
All right, here we are at the high school, getting ready to celebrate another staff member of the month. Let's go surprise Ms. Winkle.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. I have an announcement to make. Once again, the district has chosen a staff member of the month, someone to celebrate for all their hard work and effort and all the energy they put into their job. This month's staff member of the month is Ms. Winkle. Ms. Winkle!
I've got no, no tea for you.
That's really sweet.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
This is such a surprise.
It's well deserved.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Mental health has been recognized as an increasingly important issue in the United States. For students to be successful academically, they also have to be well emotionally and mentally.
Each day, as school counselors, we see students who are impacted by family problems such as divorce or financial difficulties, like health issues, anxiety, depression, substance abuse, or social media issues. A student's ability to do well, even in their very willingness to come to school and actively engage in learning, is greatly impacted by these factors.
No one knows this better than Elise Winkle, who has demonstrated great initiative and leadership as the Student Assistance Coordinator at Lacey Township High School. Elise has created a safe zone, a warm welcoming space with a listening ear, and counseling services that help students find their way through problems with realistic solutions that create positive outcomes.
She has developed a great rapport with a wide range of students, and because of that rapport, often is able to address situations and prevent them from becoming bigger problems that would disrupt the environment and negatively impact the students involved.
Elise continues to support our youth in the future planning and does so willingly. She has deep relationships with her students, and they can count on her just like we can. She always goes above and beyond and is searching for new and improved programs and resources to assist students and their families.
As a school counseling team, we have worked with Elise for over many years, from her days as an elementary school counselor to her transition to the high school. In all that time, Elise has never once said she was too busy to make time for a student in need or address an issue.
When a student is referred to Elise and she responds, "I've got this," we all know she means it and will follow through. So, Elise, we all want you to know, all of us here at Lacey Township High School admire your work and feel lucky we've got you, and know that our students are in such caring, capable hands. Keep up your great work, Elise. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Elise.
Congratulations. Great job.
All right. And their videos will be posted on our website, so if you want to re-watch that, that's where it'll be. All right, Mr. Leidl, another segment of the Lacey Minute.
Rain is falling down. Rain is falling down. Pitter patter, pitter patter, rain is falling down.
I think we're gonna have to change that to the Lacey Three Minute. And very grateful to Mr. Mermin and his students for putting that together, so a round of applause to him. Okay, I do have a couple more comments to make, but I would be remiss if I didn't recognize and provide another moment of silence sadly for the University of Virginia football player, so let's take another moment of silence for them and their families. Thank you. Okay, so I think by now we all know I was going to invite the community to our high school fall play, which begins tonight and kind of why we go outside, right? But it is a good way to get into the holiday spirit, and it is a Christmas carol, so the performances are tonight, tomorrow at seven o'clock, Saturday at seven o'clock, and Sunday at seven o'clock. So I encourage you to get there if you can. All right, so before I end my comments tonight, I see that there is a huge representation for the wrestling program, and I believe a lot of our wrestlers are here. So where are you wrestlers? Can you stand up so we can see you? All right, is this the whole team? Pretty much? No? More of you? Half? Okay, I was gonna say, I know there's more. Okay, thanks. So I know you're all here to support the expansion of the wrestling room, and it's a topic we've been talking about for about five years. And I want to be very clear in saying that the wrestling program, as well as all of our programs, both academically and athletically, are important to us. But to put it very simply, we are in the midst of one of the most challenging fiscal challenges that this district has ever seen. And I know it's not what you want to hear, I see your faces. But that's the reality of it. And it's a reality that unfortunately this board and this administration has to contend with. And that's thanks to the S2 legislation, which is not over, and it's not going to be over anytime soon. So the perception is that we don't care about the wrestlers, and that's just not the case. We do care. And we care because we've explored many options, and I know many of you in the room know this. So most recently, one of those options was to use the Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu facility on Lacey Road that was generously offered to us by former board member Tom de Blass, and we were very grateful for that offer. And I want to thank Mr. de Blass for making that available to us, by the way, free of charge. However, after consideration, I know by Coach Bonitidis, by Principal King, and by Athletic Director Delvento, it was decided that an off-premise site would be more detrimental than helpful, so I know that was taken off the table. Another option was to use a portion of Cafeteria South, and that option was also rejected for a variety of reasons. So for now, the wrestling program will be able to use the two spaces that are adjacent to the current wrestling room. We've already started work on making sure that that happens. Moving forward, we are going to continue to explore options. A lot of them have been presented to us via email. We have a meeting on December 5th. So we'll explore those. And obviously, you know, we have to work within the scope of affordability, and we have to stay within the guidelines that are provided to us by the New Jersey Department of Education. So we're gonna continue to have those discussions. We will take a look at all of the emails that were sent. I think a couple of plans came through, and we're gonna see what we can do. But until then, you have a space. We're gonna make sure that those two adjacent rooms are ready for you, and we hope that you have an outstanding season, and we wish you all the best and all the luck. All right. Oh, actually, I also know a couple of questions were provided to us as they relate to the wrestling room. Most of them have been answered already, but a new question is, what is the current budget for the 2223 wrestling program? So Sharon, I believe you have the answer to that?
Yes, so in the current budget, there is approximately $30,000 allocated to the wrestling program, and that's not inclusive of tournament fees. So any tournament fees are above, beyond that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to end with, once again, congratulating our unsung hero Bennett, our Seniors of the Month, Michael, Grace, and Andrew. And finally, I would like to wish all of our families a happy Thanksgiving and a relaxing Thanksgiving break. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Board President Leo.
Thank you, Dr. Perer. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment at this time. So an audience member wishing to... I'm sorry, anybody that wants to vacate, go home and study and read a book, go ahead.
Jay, you're gonna watch the scene down there. Congratulations, Mrs. Swinkle. That was really nice.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I always forget the break. The whole fire alarm thing just...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Have a good night.
I remember when she was born, but got sick. Yeah.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, we're gonna continue on now. All right, public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand. When called upon, state their name, address, affiliation, intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments are made on one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice, and to all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only. There will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. Okay, at this time, we're gonna open up the floor, public comment. Right there in the middle. Come on down.
My name is Matt Coon. I live at 1107 Oahu Drive. Good evening. My name is Matt Coon. I'm a senior here at Lacey Township High School. I'm the captain of our wrestling team. A little bit about me, last year I was a District 25 champ, Region 7 runner-up, and I lost in the second round of the state tournament. I've been involved with the wrestling program since I was in first grade for the last 12 years of my life. I've watched and participated in the rise of this program, and I have no doubt that I couldn't have accomplished what I have in my wrestling career and in life so far without the help of this program. Wrestling has taught me so many things. Wrestling has taught me what hard work really is, and you get what you put in, and what having a work ethic means in life, and that you get out what you put in. I feel that these are life lessons that I will take with me throughout my life. Without wrestling, I wouldn't have these life experiences that are going to prepare me for my future. This program and the people in it have put in so much time and effort and shown love for the sport of wrestling and for this town. For so long, for so long, and for all that, we want to thank you for the opportunity to continue to let us grow this program with the expansion of the room and provide a place for the kids of this town to learn the value of hard work and work ethic that I was able to learn as a kid. Fortunately, this program has been growing rapidly over the years, and I think it's time for our home to grow as well. This room expansion wouldn't just benefit the high school team, it would benefit the 50-plus boys and girls of the youth program. And an example of that is this past Tuesday night, having a ton of kids come out and wrestle, boys and girls. This room will allow us to practice as a team, and when you split up a team, because there isn't enough room, you are fracturing the team. If we try to fit in all of our current rooms, if we try to fit everybody in our current room, somebody will get hurt. So, thanks for letting us expand. All the people in this program have worked tirelessly and hard to get this room expanded, as we have raised the money and gotten all the right people to look over the plans and gotten the approval. Everyone in this program has worked so hard and so long to help us get this room. So thank you for helping us expand the Lacey Wrestling Program. I wouldn't be the person I am today if it wasn't for this program. Thank you for letting us grow and help produce more successful, hard-working young men like the men here and the young men of this town and team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I know it's not easy standing up there, but you did a great job. Next.
My name is Mark Agiri. 1115 Pheasant Run Road, Forkett River, New Jersey. I hope everyone's having a good day today, and I would like to thank my coach Bones for having me come out tonight and speak to you guys, explaining to you guys about what wrestling program here at Lacey did for me mentally, physically, emotionally. I was part of Class 2021. As you can tell, I do stand out. I was born with a limb deficiency in my left forearm, causing me, my hands not fully developed properly, obviously making life a bit difficult for me from the start. My parents always tried getting me into sports from a young age, like soccer, because it's a sport that only includes legs, or karate, because the majority of the sport is kicking. You can laugh, because I myself think that that's still hilarious to this day. I found wrestling in middle school, and I really fell in love with the sport. Growing up, I always had a hoodie on. I never liked to show my arm. I was too insecure. But the only place I ever felt safe and free taking it off was in the wrestling room. Finally, just up into my junior year, I gained the confidence to roam free without not caring what people thought. Then COVID hit. We're in lockdown. I lost contact with my mother. My grandmother passed away the same week. It was all happening so fast. I had no idea what to do, besides just sit in my room and watch TV and anxiously just eat food. I gained an extreme amount of weight, and I did not take my health or anything concerned, and I became very depressed and broken. I just thought to myself that nothing was going to change, nothing was going to get better. My bed and food was the only thing I had in my life. Into my senior year, schools were opened back up with crazy restrictions, the face masks, the distancing. It was all very sad to look at. The program was moved forward to March of 2021, my senior year. I remember stepping on the scale for the first time in over six months from my junior year to September of my senior year. I was 240 pounds, the heaviest I've ever been. I remember my coach talking to me and telling me he was gonna need me at 220, so that gave me the motivation to lose the 20 pounds I had until March, so it was perfect. It was my second year starting. My first year was pretty disappointing. So I did not have any high hopes for the season. My mindset was kind of in a "let's get this over with" type of mood. That wasn't until I started winning. All wins I had this short season were all by pin, and my three losses came from kids top 10 ranked at the shore at the time. Lost to all three of them by points. The out-of-shape, insecure kid who thought he had nothing going for him realized he had so much potential behind him, decided enough was enough. Every day after the season, I went out running, started picking up the weights, and just became savage. Lost all the weight I gained, put on so much muscle, and most importantly, created this mindset that is now going to last me a lifetime. All because of one shortened wrestling season. Back to my mother, who I did say earlier I lost contact with. She passed away earlier this year. Now, what wrestling taught me was low and forward. That was said to us every single practice and every single match. Low and forward. We take our hits, we take our punches, and it beats us up to our lowest points. But that's why we keep moving forward no matter the cost for a bigger and brighter future. I want to say I don't know how I would have reacted to my mother's passing if I never wrestled. But all I can say is because of this program, I am still out there attacking, working full-time, and competing in the sport of grappling now. I coach youth program over at Ocean County BJJ under Tom de Blass. And this is a daily thing for me. This is a lifestyle for me. And no matter what happens, whatever life brings to me, I know because of this program, low and forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Anyone else? Sir?
My name is Quinn Kearns, 400 Pine Forest Lane. Hello, Lacey Township Board of Education. My name is Quinn Kearns, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Lacey Township Wrestling Program. I'm a former Lion, graduated in 2019. Excuse me. Currently on pace to graduate Rowan University in 2023, May of 2023. I'd like to preface this statement by saying that I was originally not of... I wasn't a Lacey Lion until my junior year of high school, from where I moved from Manchester. So I find it important to note that because I have experience of two different types of programs. First, I want to speak on the program and the team that I was a part of for my junior, senior year of high school. The wrestling program here has been one of the best athletic programs I've been a part of in any high school. I'm of the firm belief that athletics in high school are a place to which an individual can go and become something bigger than themselves, also while creating individual improvements of themselves. To that point, I would like to add that wrestling is just as much as a team sport as it is an individual. My junior year coming into the high school, I was aware that the program was good and that they had a very strong team. However, I wasn't expecting them to be so excited and welcoming me with open arms as they were. From that point forward, I knew that there was going to be a group of people here that were there to support me in my growth as an individual. Every time that I stepped foot into that room, I felt like it was full of other individuals who wanted to push their limits and make themselves better. And from my experience, being surrounded by a group of people like that just makes you want to push yourself more. A room like this helps in developing a positive mindset about hard work and perseverance. Actually, it's contagious, because it does not just develop a team's mindset, but the mindset of the individual going into each day. And to me, that's really what makes a team. Having the attitude, having that attitude, excuse me, has helped shape me into the individual I am today. There is no doubt. And I go about each day with a positive outlook, hoping to be better than the day before. Another experience that I would like to speak on about the program, something that Manchester lacked, was a community presence. The program here has a presence from the high school down to the youth wrestling program, and that's wonderful. Having a presence like that in a community is vital, because it establishes that same work ethic and mindset from a young age. While that is important, I would like to say guidance and support that comes out of that community is probably greater than that of the program. This is because there's always someone in that community that is willing and able to lend a hand or some advice to you. Lastly, I would like to speak on the impact the coaches had on me as an individual and the lessons I took from them. I want to start by saying the four years, in the four years of varsity wrestling, I had four different coaches, and none have been as dedicated and impressive to me as the coach that I had my senior year. That's because he came in from a program that had already been strong, and the coach left actually for the same reason that my coach freshman year had left, because his wife said that he needed to stay home with the kids. And he came in and he just had an impact right away. It was crazy to me how how smooth the transition was, and I'm sure it was not mentally for him, but just the way that he took everything and ran with it, the entire program, I was extremely impressed. Sorry. They say that iron sharpens iron, and I believe that in every sense. As wrestlers, we go into practice looking to improve, and a lot of the time, we are surrounded by other wrestlers who are better than ourselves. So we as a team get better because each of us want to compete with each other in that room every day, looking for a spot to earn. This is not only true of the wrestlers, but of the coaches as well. They come into each practice looking to learn from the other coaches as well as the wrestlers. The wrestlers teach them how to become a better coach and how to become a better role model in life. To finish this statement, I would like to say that I believe the wrestling program should be allowed more space for the wrestlers, which now I know I was not aware of before this meeting, sorry. Separating, I think that separating the team does not allow for the program to prosper the way that it should with everyone in it gaining the proper experiences to attain a great mental fortuity. As a wrestler, I was always quiet and observant. Actually, in all my athletic endeavors, I was very quiet and observant. So being able to have all the coaches and athletes in the room at once helped me tremendously in my ability to improve as a person and as an athlete. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing wrong in your speech is you said you're a former Lion. You're never a former Lion, you're always a Lion, right? No matter how long you've been here. But thank you. Anyone else? Young man, come on down.
So my name's Logan Carter. I live at 209 Cedar Lake Point. And I started wrestling my freshman year, and Coach Fister was my coach. For those two years, he was best coach I've ever had, and I didn't think anyone could replace him. So when my junior year come around, I was a little hesitant to meet Coach Bones and see how the team would do with him, but immediately, like Quint said, everyone was, it felt like a family, almost. I struggled with a lot of anxiety during my high school, and he was the number-one person that I would always go to when I needed something. And I was skipping school a lot, wasn't going to class my whole first marking period. I missed English, the whole thing. And I was just really down in the dumps, and we would have conversations every day, and he helped me get through that. And wrestling is... So everyone knows my little brother Brady, and he's known to be a better wrestler than me, and that really... That got to me, but it was more than that, wrestling in that room. It was just a way that I could express and get rid of the stress and all that anxiety, and I didn't even really care that if I was good or not, but I'd always try my hardest, and it got me in good places. Now I'm an electrician and going to school for it and doing really good for myself. And I think that separating the team is a big mistake, because when you separate the team, it's usually the A-team practicing and the B-team practicing, and that just automatically puts that doubt in the B-team kid's mind that they're not good. And having everyone in the same room, knowing that you're practicing with the big dogs, like that's a good feeling to have, and you know that you have a family. So I think we've raised a ton of money before. We know that. All these tournaments, all these parents, they bust ass to get it done, and they do. So I think every opportunity that we can, if we can raise the money, then I think that we should should look for that opportunity to do it, because so many kids that have struggled academically and just in life have prospered going through this program. Like, I don't know if you guys know Gerard O'Connor, but he was a really troubled student, and after Coach Bones got to him and talked to him a lot, and we wrestled, he got his stuff together, and now he's doing really good for himself. And just like Mark said, low and forward, that is the motto. Whenever I feel down and I feel like I... Whenever, whenever I feel down and I feel like I can't do anything, low and forward. Everything's gonna get better. You just gotta push through it. And uh, I, I still talk to him to this day whenever I have problems. I, I know I'm comfortable texting him. He, it's, it's, it's a family. So I think keeping everything together will just make family stronger, make the team grow and this, this is the biggest team we've had in a while. When I first started wrestling, we had twenty kids max. We were just filling the varsity lineup. And now we don't have enough room. So I think just the impact that it has on every single kid that it had on me, it could, it could do really good things for kids. Like I, I wrestled with Quint. He graduated in twenty nineteen. I graduated in twenty twenty. I don't talk to him, but every time I see him, it's like we're best friends. It's like nothing, nothing changed. So I think having that relationship with each other as well, it just, it's unbreakable. It's, you need it. And it helps kids a lot. And just having, knowing that you can go, a lot of coaches will sometimes focus on their better wrestlers because they're better and they want them to. He will go to every single individual person and he will teach them anything. Like he doesn't single anyone out and that's what makes everything so good. And that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Bill Coon, uh, eleven oh seven Oahu in Forkett River. I've been with the program now for about ten years. Uh, Logan, you're actually a really good wrestler. Don't set yourself short. One of the biggest things with having all the kids work out in the same room is you have kids like Logan, who are in their junior and senior year, working with kids that are freshmen. My son's a senior now. No way he's where he is if he's not working out with a kid like Logan. Logan makes the next kid better. And when you take the kids and you split them up into three different rooms, you're fracturing the whole thing. You're taking kids and putting them out on an island where they're not learning from each other. And, and that's, that's what we need. It's, it's, it's like trying to practice basketball on a, on a quarter court. Can't do it, you know? We need that space. If, if you guys could at least commit to a line of sight from one wrestling room, you know, through the rooms, is that something that we're in the process of doing? Anybody?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. I, I think that's important. Um, we're gonna do everything we can to support you guys. We're not asking for money or funds from the school. Just asking for help letting us get stuff accomplished. And, and I understand we have rules and parameters to work around. We're doing that, but when we have kids like this, you know, that on the drop of a dime come back and, and are willing to talk about how much they learned through this program, it's important stuff. The older kids that are mentoring the younger kids, I know Hilela's got a couple dozen of his here tonight. But they, these kids on a Friday night have our high school kids, our juniors and seniors coaching them. They're coming to that room. And this is important because it, it takes the work ethic and it takes the responsibility. The older kids are doing responsible things by always behaving themselves, keeping their grades up and doing what they're supposed to do because now they're a role model for the younger kids. And that's a culture we've been trying to build in this program for the last ten years. It's finally coming together and all we need is a little bit more room so we can fit more kids in and do it. So I appreciate that you guys are coming around on this and I really hope this gets done. Thank you.
Bob Schinder, uh, twenty-two, Bobway Court, uh, president of the Lacey Youth Wrestling Club. It sounds like things have changed today maybe, uh, which is a good thing. The point I want to make is it shouldn't have to come to us creating this monster public outcry to get you guys to move. We had meetings in, I think it was May of, of this year as the, as the last school year was ending. We knew we had a problem. We knew we had a lot of kids. We knew we need more space. And we had meetings. It seemed like we were going in a good spot and then nothing happened until today. Practice starts Monday. Even if we can use the classrooms, how are we putting wrestling mats in them? Do we have to cut the wrestling mats that we own? Who, how are we, how are we padding the walls? How are we providing a safe and adequate space that we could have provided and we could have paid for if you gave us the approval four months ago, five months ago? So you do say you support us. But you only support us when we make a stink and when we come out and, and bring a million people here. You say you support us. The HVAC system seemed to be the biggest roadblock in your plan that you wanted to do. You got one point eight million dollars in ESR funds. I know for a fact that our HVAC unit was proposed to be swapped out. You said no. You swapped out ten other ones or you're gonna swap out ten other ones. You approved ten other ones in the district, but not ours. So I question if you really do support us or if you only support us when we make a stink. They deserve better. These kids deserve better. This program is huge. It's actually now, I think, probably the biggest program in our town. Between the youth program, the middle school and the high school, this program is a monster. And you would do a lot better by doing better for them. These kids, yeah, you have Mark coming back and telling you how good he did and, and Logan and Quint. But what you don't see is the tens and twenties of JV kids that just quit because they had no, they didn't feel like they were part of the team. These guys bought in, they were good enough. There were some that weren't good enough that went to practice the first few days and said, F it, I'm not doing this. When if they were in a room with the varsity guys, maybe, maybe their lives are different. Maybe a couple of kids who quit and went down the wrong path, don't do that. It's not hard. We don't, we're not asking for much. Just, like I said, let us fundraise. We're not gonna put a seven hundred thousand dollar HVAC unit on top of the, on top of the school. We can't do that. But a hundred grand, fifty grand, thirty grand? I mean, if you, if you were giving us the classrooms, you would have had, if you gave us the classrooms in June, you would have had a beautiful space down there right now. You would have had wall pad custom made for the place and a mat custom made for the room. And instead, it's gonna look like a ghetto this year. It's just not right.
Alright, so I, I know we have a couple more comments, but I just want to say a couple of things. So first of all, thank you to our students because I, I know it's hard to get up here. I get the frustration. I think we all do. Um, but a couple of misconceptions. Uh, we did give the approval for those adjacent rooms, but this is the part where perhaps the public doesn't understand. We had items in that room for over a year. We had trailers that we had to empty from Lenoka Harbor and Forkett River School. We are short on storage. We are short on money. We are short on a lot of things. We never reneged and said that you could have those adjacent rooms. Instead, we tried to find alternatives to give you more room. Hence why we approached Mr. DeBlass and why he was gracious enough to say that you can use the space. So we never reneged on that. That was always our commitment. We are working as hard as we can to get those rooms ready. Is it gonna look like a ghetto? No, it's not. We're better than that. Our maintenance and grounds staff, they're better than that. So the rooms are cleared. We're going to continue to move ahead and get the rooms looking as best as they can while we explore other options that might be better, perhaps even for the current season. Mr. Schinder provided some data for us, uh, some plans. We're going to consider them. So we have a meeting on December fifth. But you know, the perception out there is that we don't care and that we changed our minds. We didn't. We were always committed to giving you those adjacent rooms. Um, we also explored Cafeteria South. That still might be an option. My understanding is you guys like it a hundred and fifty degrees. We can't get it that hot. We tried, right, Coach? We tried. Um, so we can continue to explore. Perhaps that's even another space. We're gonna do the very best that we can. You have our commitment on that.
Anyone else? Come on.
Richard Bitnick, Lake Barnagat Drive. Good evening, Lacey citizens and to our students that are here tonight. Okay, a couple of things. I have three things actually that I want to discuss. The first thing is something I have brought up on numerous occasions, and I'm not the only person who's brought this up. It's the length of these meetings. Stop including everything that is not board business in your meetings. Everything else, as I said, belongs in a meeting elsewhere. Frankly, the Students of the Month, I think most of the students would actually like to see in school at some sort of rally where they could all participate and actually witness their fellow students in the honoring that's going on. And that isn't able to be done when, in the approach that you do right now. I mean, and quite frankly, the last couple of meetings have gone on till eleven forty-five at night. It's just unacceptable. Unacceptable because there are people who actually have to work in the morning after real jobs. And uh, so it's something that has been brought up before and I'm bringing it up again. Yeah, right. For real jobs, exactly. So um, excuse me? Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
Be sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm so sorry.
Alright, please. Thank you. I read yesterday with curiosity that the CDC was speaking out about children getting COVID now at much higher rates. They blame this on two years of masking children, which causes weakened immune systems. And these are the CDC words. If you want to go look it up, you can see for yourself. FYI. So members of this board who served back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one have themselves now to blame for not only emotionally and mentally injuring your children, now they could have physically injured your children's health by their actions. I spoke about this right at the beginning because I am an informed citizen and I question everything and do my own research. Anyone who seriously had researched this topic would have known that what is being spoken out now was truth. The board lacked courage and/or was ignorant in its actions. Just like the cheerleaders of those so-called vaccines. Now I read, I read day after day of young people dying suddenly and a whole slew of other medical issues related to these so-called vaccines. Not a surprise at all. To inject oneself with a drug which was never thoroughly tested and one that gave blanket immunity to Big Pharma seemed like almost suicide to me. But individuals just followed along sadly, just like our board did with the masking of your children. Three, and I mean this in due respect when I'm about to say because some people may take this personally, but it needs to be said. We're, this is the month of Thanksgiving and being grateful for what we have. So to members of the Lacey Teachers Education Association, I'm going to be as honest and blunt and direct in my comments to you. Some of the reasons lately that these meetings have been running on for hours is because of your issues. There is a proper place for you to address them and here is not the right place. You have a negotiating committee that deals with all of your grievances and concerns. The public should not be subjected to this. I find it rather curious though that for some reason you think you'll be getting public sympathy with all of your, so how shall I say, your stories and concerns. I will tell you this, the public is not interested. For a group who has a nine point five month yearly contract, tenure, very nice health benefits, summers off, a great pension, golden parachutes when you uh, leave for your unused sick and personal days, a week off for teachers' conventions, Christmas break, spring break, there isn't much sympathy to go around. Especially when those, there are those in this town who have no health insurance and who are truly living from paycheck to paycheck and could only dream of the benefits you all have. Besides the outrageous cost to the taxpayers for your health benefits, something to the tune of sixteen million dollars according to the budget. You all knew what you were getting into when you chose education as your profession. The gives and takes of that line of work. This is supposed to be all about the kids. Let's all stop kidding ourselves. It's not about the kids. It's about the adults and sadly has mostly been that way. If it had been the other way around was true.
Mr. Bitnick, one thing before you, just, your time's up. Hold on. Anybody else have a comment that wants to come down to talk? Anyone? Okay, you're gonna have to come back, Mr. Bitnick.
If this was the other way around, this would, this, just, no, no.
Yeah, no, Mr. Bitnick, you have to come back. I have the young lady wants to come make a comment. So you'll have to come back. Thank you.
Good evening, Colleen. Good evening, Colleen Brant, two twenty Eagleswood Avenue. I didn't prepare anything because I wasn't sure if I was gonna speak tonight, but a couple of things were said tonight that I just want to address. First, with regard to Mark. And I wouldn't have come down just for this, but I thought about it. Mark, I want you to know and everyone else to know that yours is one of my two most favorite matches I've ever watched. Neither one of them include either one of my sons. My two most favorite wrestling matches, one of them includes um, a JV match from my older son's freshman year that involved a wrestler that, you know, we knew was going to be and turned out to always be a JV wrestler. He was on the spectrum. But um, the coach, the, talk about split, varsity was in one room for a tournament, JV was in another room. And uh, there was downtime in JV, so the coaches were in the varsity room and this gentleman came up with a match and they had to go run and get the coaches. So while they're running to get the coaches, the rest of the JV team surrounds his mat and is on his mat and is coaching him and cheering him on. And he ends up winning. And our coaches come in, but they see the way the other wrestlers are coaching him and cheering him and they just stopped and they allow them to do it. And I think it was the only win this gentleman ever had his entire wrestling career, but one of my favorite matches until Mark. When we were in Barnagat. And uh, Mark was really just starting to find himself as a wrestler about that time and he was called up for what was a pretty big match and the room was thundering. Because not only did he win, but he won by an astounding pin. And uh, to this day, I will, I will remember that match the rest of my life. And I'm sure you will too. And I, and I know what this sport has done for some of these young men. My sons, they're, they have lifelong friendships with their wrestlers. Including my older son with the JV wrestler I was talking about and you know, if they're, as Matt Coon said, when they're in separate rooms, it's a fractured team. And if they were in separate rooms back then, my son probably would not have developed such a close friendship with this one young man. Uh, that has continued now. My, my older son is twenty-five years old and this young man will be a lifelong friend of his. Even though they ended up being on separate teams, they're all one team. You know, to say that you, you are always committed to the rooms is a little hard to swallow given the fact that it was a storage room up until today, yesterday? I, I, I don't know how you can say with a straight face that you're committed to expanding and letting them use those rooms when practice starts on Monday. And up until a few days ago, even if possibly today, those rooms were filled with storage. It sends the message that those boxes and the bookshelves and the unused fans are more important than these young men. So I have a really hard time swallowing that. As Mr. Schinder said, I, I don't know how this room is going to get ready for Monday. You know, they deserve to have a room that they can all be You know, they deserve to have a room that they can all be in and a safe room. The room that they're currently in is not safe. Going to an alternate site is absolutely unacceptable. It was unacceptable when it was explored back when we were sharing what used to be the auxiliary gym and is now the weight room, and when we were sharing that with other sports, including cheerleading, and I have nothing against cheerleading, so please do not let anything I say be construed that way. But as I'm sure most of you know, that room on the original plan for the expansion was supposed to be a dedicated wrestling room. I've always joked, and it's starting to not be a joke anymore, that wrestling is the redheaded stepchild in this and unfortunately, many districts. And the fact that we have always, always been pushed aside, that room was supposed to be a wrestling room, it got changed, and then it became the auxiliary gym. And then there was talk right before we got the current room about maybe making that a wrestling room again, but then it was going to displace the cheerleaders, and then there was talk, well, have the cheerleaders go over to the middle school. And I spoke up then and said, absolutely not. They are a school sport, they're a school organization, they belong to stay on school grounds, the same is for the wrestling team. They should not be carted off, off the school grounds. They should not be in a cafeteria, for I'm sure Coach has his, his own reasons, but, you know, this program has grown exponentially since they've had a dedicated room. And cafeteria south or any other place, rolling up and, rolling and unrolling the mats in the cafeteria is not going to do it.
Thank you.
Justin Bonathatis, I just wanted to look at everyone and say thank you. If there's going to be some progress over the next couple of days before the season starts, I truly, genuinely appreciate it. I wholeheartedly want to be in this town. I want to continue to make an impact on the students and the student athletes in this town. I just simply need a resource to do so. And if the ball is rolling and day one starts Monday and things are on a different field or a different environment, different setting, I feel tonight would be the night to tell you that it is extremely appreciated by myself, by the people that are here, the kids, their parents, guardians, and our wrestling community. It is not a secret that our program has grown. To be completely honest, that was my number one goal. I've surpassed that goal in numbers. I never thought we'd get past 60 in a Group III school, but I would take 150 if I could. I, I, I just want to make a difference in a kid's life. So thank you, guys, and hope everybody has a good rest of their night.
Mr. Bitnick?
The room is clear. The room has cleared.
What? You can't connect? What are you doing? What are you doing, Logan?
Can I say one more thing?
Public comment's over.
Go ahead.
All right. I feel like a lot of other sports, like football, hockey, basketball, anything, you, you can go and watch that. You can see them practicing, but in the wrestling room, you don't really get to see what's going on, and I think that's a big part of what you guys just aren't like. And it's not like you don't get it, but you need to be there to understand, you know what I mean? So if you were to go to a wrestling practice and just watch, I feel like you would get a better grasp of, like, what they're doing there and how it's affecting people's lives, and that's it. So if you have the time, go check out a wrestling practice.
Thank you. Richard Bitnick, part two. Okay, so we were talking about being grateful. Hmm. Righto. Okay, so I have an idea, and I'm throwing this out to the LTA, who's not even here any longer, so maybe they'll listen to it on tape.
I am here, sir.
Okay, great. Good, good, good to see it. So, you know, it's obvious we don't have money for anything, and $16 million is going for health insurance, which is about 25% of the school's budget. Wow. There's where most of our money is going. Besides for salaries, there isn't absolutely anything left for anything else, for programs, for anything. It's really quite sad. The board's trying to negotiate to try to get costs down. I would suggest, as a giveback, which would be nice to see the union for once give something back, to actually make some efforts to work with the board to reduce the cost of the health insurance. You have great benefits, great benefits, much better than most people that I know of, especially when you're in the education system and you're anything with the state. These are facts. You go into the corporate world, you're not going to get anything like this, and you're going to pay a hell of a lot of money for it as the, as the employee. So there's a thing called being grateful, and quite frankly, coming to the meetings, being here for hours, crying with your stories about, you know, everything that you, oh, you don't have and you don't want this, just think about all the people in this town who don't have anything near what you have. You know, you are public workers. You are. You are public workers, you are public employees, the public, the mass public. And I'm going to say, yes, some of you live here, like 80-some percent live in this town, but the mass number of people who pay for your ability to work here do not have any work affiliation with the school district. And I'm just saying this because the board obviously caves into you all the time, and you don't have, they don't have the courage to stand up to you, but we need to really get our act together in the school district. It's only going to get worse over the next several years, and the board is partly the blame for that because they knew for years that there were going to be these cuts coming, and they didn't do anything about it. They didn't plan for it, so they are supposed to be in charge of fiscal responsibility, so they failed that way. But the teachers' union also has been fighting for more and more and more every year. They don't want to give any givebacks. There was that six-period stipend, they didn't want to do anything with that. And quite frankly, the school district needs to be run like a business if it's going to survive. I'm speaking for the taxpayers now. I think almost everybody will probably agree with me on this issue. If we're going to have to pay a certain amount for the school, there has to be some give and take, not just take, take, take. You know what I want to see in your contract? I want to see in your contract, performance evaluations attached to student achievement. I want to see it's all about the kids. I want you to prove to me and the school board and to the parents that this is all about the kids, and it really isn't all about the adults. We can change it around, but it has to be a concerted effort. You are the educators, supposedly the educators, and you should be understanding that there are fiscal constraints, and how much more do you expect the public to have to pay for an underachieving school district? So I'm going to say what the board should be saying to you, and it's like, it's time to get everybody's act together. So I'm fighting for the kids because they're being cheated of a good education. I'm fighting for the parents because they're being robbed, and I'm, I'm fighting for the taxpayers are getting screwed every which way because they are getting nothing for what they get. I mean, quite frankly, the school board likes to talk, you know, with sports program, but I want to see academics be the number one. I want to see us number one in academics. It can be done. It's not going to be done with this current board, I can tell you this. It can be done with a board who actually has vision, drive, determination, and focus. When you have that, you can do anything, I know. So that's my message to the teachers' union, and I do not mean to be disrespectful. I understand people are all trying to do their best, I would hope, but maybe that isn't quite good enough. So with that said, I wish you all a lot of good luck, and thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, any other comments? All right. So Dr. Brer, you want to say something?
Well, I just, I want to thank our students because, again, it's very, very hard to come up and speak in front of their peers, and I'm sorry Mr. Bitnick left, because what I wanted to say is, you know, I'm sorry that we inconvenienced people like Mr. Bitnick and his entourage. But as long as I'm superintendent, we will always recognize students at board meetings. I think what people forget is, is that, you know, our board members are volunteers, and this is the only opportunity that you all get to celebrate our students and our teachers, for that matter. And by the way, that is our business, and I think Mr. Bitnick forgets that, so I, I just needed to say that. We'll always recognize students and teachers at board meetings. I think you all agree.
Yes, definitely.
And I, and I think you put it, you know, regardless, I'll stay here six, seven hours to recognize our students because, like you just said, the students are our business. This is what we do here, and recognizing them is part of that, and I'm very happy that we do that. Okay, so we're going to move on to committee reports. So I'll start with Mrs. Claus. Are you down there to?
Yes. Oh, committee report, okay. Alrighty, our meeting was November 16th, started at 4:15, lasted about an hour and a half. We have a few policies and regulations to discuss. Policy 1511, Board of Education website accessibility. This we actually already have in place, but it was developed, this policy was developed in 2017 as a result of the United States Department of Education and the Office of Civil Rights requirement of school district websites, content and functionality to be accessible for people with disabilities. Policy 1511 was accepted by the OCR as part of the settlement agreement with New Jersey school districts. School districts that receive federal funding have been required to comply with the provisions of the federal law and the provisions of the policy guide 1511. Therefore, this is mandated. We then discussed policy 2415. This was pretty much just a language change. It's been revised to reflect the recent updated Title I policy guidelines concerning parent and family engagement. Parent involvement was revised to parent and family engagement, and policy, numbers and titles were also updated. This is also a mandated policy. Student journalism, this is new, policy 5722. It was recently signed into law and codified. New Jersey statute requires school districts to adopt a written policy concerning student freedom of expression in accordance with the provisions of the new statutes. The new statutes include definitions indicates a student journalist has the right to exercise freedom of speech, end of the press, and school-sponsored media, provides student expression that is not protected expression by student journalists, includes a process of school officials must follow when is believed the student's expression in school-sponsored media is not protected, and provides an appeal process of school official's decision restraining student expression. Many of the provisions in the new statutes are currently addressed in Strauss Esme, current policy 2432, school-sponsored publications, which we are actually abolishing tonight, and we're picking up this new one. So you'll see some abolishments on the agenda tonight. The next policy and regulation is 5513, care of school property. This is also mandated. It's been revised to update the language to include an updated legal citation. This code section addresses the school district's right to reimbursement for damaged, lost, or destroyed textbooks loaned out to the students. There is also several minor revisions to the language of policy guide 5513. In addition, the regulation guide 5513 has been revised to include any updated process used to assess and collect textbook fines. The scheduled fines include, the regulation guide has been removed and scheduled is now addressed in C.8 of the regulation and indicates fines may be assessed for lost and damaged textbooks in accordance with the schedule as approved of the superintendent or designee. The next policy is 8420, emergency crisis situations. This is mandated. It's been updated to include new language regarding school security drills. This new law requires a school district to ensure a security drill that occurs when students are present and does not expose the students to content or imaging that is not developmentally or age-appropriate. The new law also provides school districts may permit emergency personnel access into the buildings and grounds of the schools for security drills that are scheduled outside of school hours during such times when students are not present. The school district shall now review and update the school's security drill procedures using the process that coincides with the review of the safety and security plan developed, and shall also collect input from the emergency personnel, parents, teachers, staff, mental health professionals, and student government representatives for multiple grade levels. The next policy and regulation we discussed was cooperation with law enforcement agencies. This was revised. It's been rewritten to align with NJAC 6A16-62, which covers the development, development and implementation of policies and procedures for law enforcement operations in a school. All school districts must annually review, revise when appropriate, and adopt Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials. We also discussed the wrestling room in our co-curricular part of our meeting. Dr. Pereira and Ms. Sylvia led a discussion about the current status of the wrestling room and the steps that are being taken to prepare the extra space needed for the upcoming season. The committee was also provided with a summary of the various options and have been explored to provide the wrestling program with more space in order to accommodate a growing program. The committee discussed additional ideas while considering financial constraints to the district. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions?
No. No, okay. Thank you.
All right. Finance?
Thank you. This is a combination of October and November because October meeting went to 11:00 or 11:30, so we didn't do our reports. We talked about the STEM project. What we're going to do is combine Phases I and II together. The architect right now is working on combining the bids into one project, and we approved the project back in May of 2022, so we'll have more coming on that. We discussed the BCPA RBT position. We're looking into saving money and possibly going with a different contractor with that. There's other, Mr. Bond and Dr. Pereira, did they get back to you, Mr. Polino?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. So Mr. Bond and Dr. Pereira are going to get back to us. I know Mr. Bond was calling different districts and trying to get prices from different services, contractors around, so possibly we could save some money with that. We reviewed the use of facilities. We got an update on the boiler replacement at Cedar Creek and the middle school. They were wrapped up. The fire alarm system is still ongoing in all the schools. We still have delays due to materials. The Lenoka Harbor sign that the PTO made a donation to is, we approved it, and they should be working on that. So the sign's really, really nice, so that'll be a nice addition to Lenoka Harbor School. We, again, talked about solar panels. That's an ongoing discussion about what we'll be doing with the solar panels. We discussed needing additional cameras and door access, access by the staff at the Milpon School. When the greeter is not present, we have funds available in the Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act that we will use for this. We discussed a childhood hunger initiative power plant. It's called CHIP. We are presented with information on the application that we submitted to try to get meals and snacks for children in need on weekends and holidays. And on our next agenda, we will be discussing the wrestling room. We've been doing this for a couple of years now, but on the next meeting, we will be discussing the wrestling room and the space. We will be discussing Mr. Schinder's and Lacey wrestling program, the email that he sent. I personally would like to give them more room and have them all in one room if we can find the space anywhere in the school, because I agree to have three separate rooms and a window between the rooms if we have the space and we can find it. Personally, I would, I would like to do that for the wrestlers. So this will be find it. Personally, I would like to do that for the wrestlers. So, this will be a big topic at the facilities meeting. Dr. Pereira, if you could please ask the athletic director to join us for that meeting. Thank you. So, we'll have more on that at the December board meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I just have something to add.
Oh, I'm sorry. Questions?
Yeah, that's okay. Not a question, but Donna, if you can add, we talked about it in policy, actually, if you can just take a look at the storage trailer, I guess, or on the trailer, what is it?
Facility.
Facility, outside. Just if you can look at that for a space too, because I believe it's like 40 feet wide, you know, depth by, I don't know the length, but it's pretty big. And they are, they said they have fundraising money, so that might be a good space for them to have their own unit.
Okay, we'll definitely put that on and look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a chance that we can give a project to our shop group and ask them to build us a storage facility? I mean, schools do this all around the country where they get involved with doing things like this. Skip talks about it all the time.
We had our architect give us an estimate on building a freestanding storage unit. I'm thinking it was a half a million dollars because-
Was that storage or was that the facility for the-
For a freestanding for the wrestlers. Is that what you mean?
No, I'm talking about the store stuff that we need to find room for.
Right. Did you, you found storage, Dr. Pereira? You found, they found room for it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, trying to get behind a project like that wouldn't be a bad thing and build a camaraderie around the school. It's a, it's a good initiative to put forward to our shop teachers and everybody else in vocational to put that kind of project together for us and maybe start building some more and more and more school spirit. So, I just thought about that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Ms. Downing?
Okay, curriculum met actually this morning, and myself, Mrs. Claus, Mr. Polino, Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zalinski. The first thing we talked about was the text materials for 2022, 2023. Mr. Zalinski led a discussion of the curriculum and the materials that will be board-approved at the December board meeting. He highlighted that we will put in place a system of materials overview that will allow for a questionable resource or material to be reviewed that is similar to the library book review process. They have a really great process in place and Mr. Zalinski is suggesting that we do the same for our text materials. The next thing we talked about is the high school, I'm sorry, led a brief discussion of the desire to form a committee that will look into service learning or community service as an option for our high school and middle school students to participate in as part of their coursework and educational experience in Lacey. We approved two out-of-state trips. One was for the track competition that will be held in Staten Island in December and March, and then another one for the National Football Coaches Convention for Mr. Vercillo to attend. In special education, Mr. Bond met with CPAG on November 2nd, and they had a speaker, Jennifer, did I pronounce it right, Eskorn, Eskorn, from Ocean County Vocational School, presented a program about the offerings and the process for special education students to get evaluated, recommended, and accepted into their programs. Mr. Bond also presented an IEP versus a 504 and the IEP process. Pre-K teachers established a professional learning committee focused on improving the use of classroom data and effectively utilizing the teaching strategies gold system to analyze that data. The Second Annual Abilities Resource Fair is set for January 18th. A unified game night will also run in conjunction as did last year. A list of vendors will be shared next month. And if all of you, I think any of the board members that could attend that, it's a very good thing. So, January 18th, if you can put it on your calendars. Challenger League winter bowling dates, we have December 4th, 11th, and 18th, January 8th, 22nd, and 29th, and February 5th and 12th. I'm sure Dr. Pereira will put this in her superintendent's notes as they get closer. This also, no location yet or times, but we'll get that information later if any of you can attend those. Under technology, Alyssa's Law, everything was tested and functional. Administration access is functional. Actually, we were, showed the resource that the administrators, that we can't share because it's security, but it's really unbelievable. Our school district's in a really, really good place right now with our school's security. Digital content and application information. Mr. Zalinski spoke of the draft process that is being developed to approve apps when they are used by our students and staff. And this month in New Jersey School Boards Magazine, board members, there's an article about this if you get a chance to read it. It's really, ironically, we're right in there. Same time, you beat the article, actually. This will include review of the acceptable use of privacy policies for all apps that are loaded on our servers. The firewall has been updated and installed through the E-Rate funding. And community relations, we have the Christmas Carol being played this weekend. Tickets are still available. LTEA news, we added four additional clubs per the contract. Proud Paws at Lenoka Harbor School, two sessions, and Cedar Creek School, an art club and a kindness club. Under health and wellness, as you saw on the Lacey Minute, the Milpon Playground is 99% complete, and Lenoka Harbor Playground is 75% complete.
100%.
100% now? Today, okay. 100% complete. And Milpon has, what do you call that, a ninja?
Ninja Warrior.
Ninja Warrior. Yeah, so if you get a chance, take a ride over and see. Looks pretty neat. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downing. Any questions?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Downing, can you talk more about the volunteering aspect with the middle school and high school kids?
Yeah, we talked about that in policy, same thing.
Okay.
But the reason we, we can't, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zalinski, New Jersey doesn't allow it to be, we can't do it as a credit. Is that correct, Mr. Zalinski?
You can establish it as a course and the kids can volunteer to take it. You just can't require it as part of the graduation requirement. It's going to have to be an elective or it's going to be an offering where kids will want to get involved and we're going to give them some credit some other way, other than course credit. So, that's what the exploratory committee is going to look at that one.
So, it's a work in progress, in other words.
So, we can't, we can't write a, because we explored this a while ago back in policy about having the seniors, from freshmen to seniors, have to accumulate so many hours, volunteer hours. We can't do that for a graduation requirement.
Not as required for graduation, but we can do it as, as a club or-
You're going to want to encourage it to the point where the seniors are like, you know, involved with the community and I'm doing all these hours and maybe encouraging younger kids to do it, but it takes time to build that, that process and build that momentum.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And we did look at it in policy. A lot of states, most states don't have it as a graduation requirement.
Pennsylvania has.
Yeah.
Yeah. At school I know in particular.
Right. The graduation requirements are set in New Jersey, so that's what makes it a little, but we can look at other options.
Great. Just to, maybe I missed, we've talked to Mr. Zalinski and maybe it's a Mr. Bond question, but inclusion of our special needs children reaching out to the community for something similar, weren't we working on that too?
Yeah, for volunteering hours.
Right, and for our businesses to bring our special needs children into, kind of like that thing. Were we still working on that too?
I think you're talking about work-study.
No. You've got the multiple handicap kids with Tommy Fister and Erin Bannon. They do that on a regular basis now because they're now certified to do that. So, they bring out their groups of kids. So, we've got also the 18 and 21-year-old program. So, they are out in the, in the community now working.
Okay.
Okay, but they work under the supervision of our teachers.
All right, all right. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Downing? All right, thank you committees and chairs for that. Spotlight on Education, do you have anything, Mrs. McAvoy?
I do. I'm so proud to announce we have a couple. So, our spotlight on graduates. First, we have Anthony DiMartino. He graduated in the class of 2006. After graduation, he attended Wake Forest and University of California Santa Barbara with a doctorate in biochemistry. Anthony is now an associate professor at Maryland University Medical Center, and he's recently married. His brother, Matthew DiMartino, is from the class of 2009. After graduation, he attended and graduated from West Point. Matt is now a captain and engineer. He is currently stationed in Germany, and he recently got married. And both of the boys are the sons of Moya DiMartino. She was a long, a long-term teacher here. She worked for us about 20 years. So, we're proud of both of them. And then we have Ian Wallace. He graduated in the class of 2015. After graduation, he attended Johnson and Wales in Rhode Island. He received a bachelor's degree in travel, tourism, and hospitality management, and then a master's in business administration. Ian started his hotel career in the hotel industry with Holiday Inn and then moved into product development with the tour operators at Collette Vacations in Rhode Island and Friendly Planet Travel in Pennsylvania. Ian has recently moved to Louisiana where he now works for La Forge Parish Government and the parish's tourist commission as the sales and marketing manager. Ian has always been thankful for his time in Lacey Township High School and the teachers and people who got him where he is today. He enjoys every return trip from the bayous of Louisiana back to Lacey Township. And the last one we have is Ms. Olivia Polino. She's the daughter of President Frank Polino. She graduated with the class of 2016. She was a member of the first class to graduate from the STEM Academy when it embarked in 2012. Of the original 30 students, Olivia was one of only eight students that completed and graduated from the program. During her years at Lacey, she was a member of the National Honor Society Track Team and the soccer team in which she lettered. After graduation, Olivia attended Rowan University School of Engineering focusing on prosthesis. In 2018, she graduated as a biomedical engineer. Immediately after graduation, Olivia applied to Northwestern University Feinberg School for her master's degree in prosthetics and orthotics. She was one of the 40 students they selected from world applicants for the program. Upon graduating in March of 2023, Olivia will be completing an 18-month residency program in West Jersey, then sitting for her national boards. She then will become a certified prosthetic and orthist. It is her hope to work with children in a hospital setting. So, Mr. Polino, I'm sure you're proud of her and we're very proud of her also. And that concludes the Spotlight on the Graduates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what? I just have to say that, you know, Mr. Bidnick's up there says he wants to see students, number one. You know, he has to stay around and listen about our students and how, you know, from all grade levels for years or what they're achieving and doing, whether it's in private business or industry or, or going through schools and stuff, you know, our kids are just amazing in what they're doing. So, it's, you know, it's just, it's just a great thing, so.
I'd like to add to that, Frank. The gentleman who's, the young man who stood up tonight, Matt Kuhn, is being recruited by the Naval Academy. And we can't just be a good athlete to go to the Naval Academy. You've got to be able to do a good job in the classroom. And I believe he just completed his interviews with Congress and the senators. So, it looks like things are moving forward for him, and that's just another great kid in this town who does more than just wrestle and more than just play football. If you see him, while all the friends are hanging out usually on the Thursday and Friday night, you'll see him in the wrestling room working out with the younger wrestlers. So, we have some real good kids who are great in the classroom, but more importantly, they're great outside of the classroom and in the community.
Yeah, without a doubt, without a doubt. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to board comments. So, I didn't miss anything, right? You have nothing else to say? Okay, we're going to start with Ms. McAvoy. You ready?
I just talked.
Well, I'll pass you then.
I have a candy in my mouth.
It's the first time you're actually not talking. I didn't think I'd see the day.
I have a candy in my mouth.
Ms. Downing, you want to go?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, you know, I just want to first congratulate the unsung hero Bennett, Seniors of the Month, Madeline Kendall as Vocational Student of the Month, and kudos to our Eagle Scout, Matt. That's quite a great honor. So, congratulations to all of them. I want to also congratulate John Cox and Elise Winkle. It seems like Elise's name has come up for years through the elementary and up to the high school, and she's always had a great reputation. And I was fortunate to sit on that committee this month, and it was really hard. There were a lot of good choices, but the two we chose, I thought, were excellent. I want to thank everyone in town for electing me again for another term on the Lacey School Board. I'm really honored and I appreciate your faith in me. I want to congratulate Cheryl on her win and Jack on your win. And I want to congratulate Ed for working so hard these last three years. I'm going to miss you. I don't know if he's going to miss us, but but it was great running with him.
Welcome here next month. You're not missing me yet.
I know. I'm going to roast you in the next couple of weeks. But, but as a time, it's Thanksgiving, and I just want to thank, I'm very thankful to the whole community for electing me, and I won't let you down. We already talked about the Christmas play down in the auditorium. I agree with Dr. Pereira 100%. Our parents, I believe, and our students, I believe, enjoy coming here and getting awarded for their accomplishments, and they should be. They should be awarded by the Board of Education for the things they do. And I'm sorry if it's taking up Mr. Bidnick's time, but this is important for the students and, and their parents to show what they've accomplished. So, as far as I'm sitting on the board, I believe that we should keep this a whole tradition.
Is that another 30 years?
No. Stop it. And I was going to just make a compliment, but I'm going to take that away.
Did you finish your candy?
The graduates of, the graduates of the month, did I say it right this time?
Spotlight.
Spotlight on graduates. I, I think that that also, that's something Donna started a few years ago, and she's not going to be with us much, but I think much longer. But, I'm sorry, I have something in my eye. But I think we should continue that because there is so much success out there. There's so much success right here in our town that people are still living here, and our students stayed and made this town what it is.
You promised me it would continue, Mrs. Downing.
I promised you I would try and keep it going.
All right.
So, thank you. And again, thank you, everyone, for electing me to another term. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downing. You ready?
I'm sure. Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Congratulations to Matthew for the Eagle Scout. What an honor. Mrs. Winkle and John, Staff Member of the Month, congratulations. I want to recognize Mr. Greg Carter. He's a fourth-grade teacher at Cedar Creek School. He just won a phenomenal award for, it was Staples Thank a Teacher Award, and he was on the news and he was in different newspaper outlets. He's a phenomenal teacher. I had the pleasure of having him for one of my sons, and such an honor. And we're so happy to have Mr. Carter. Also, I want to recognize Mrs. Dawn Watson. She started these boards, AAC boards, and she was able to get one so far at every elementary school. They're big boards, and they're for children who can feel the, how can I explain? The textile, they can feel them. So, right now, she's gotten enough money for one at every single school. And now she's even going further, and she's trying to get a board at every park in town. If anyone's willing, she has a GoFundMe for that since it's not for the schools, it's for the parks. So, she has a GoFundMe. She needs just a few more thousand dollars and she'll have achieved her goal. So, congratulations, Mrs. Watson. That's phenomenal. I want to just announce that I'm a part of the Municipal Alliance, and the other day, we had Time Travelers. It's a program where senior citizens, I'm now a senior citizen, we get together with high school students. There's students in need and students that can use- There's students in need and students that can use extra adult support. So Mrs. Winkle runs it for the high school. So the Municipal Alliance spent a day with these nine students the other day, and it was so heartwarming just to be with these students and hear their stories and get to know the students. Dr. Clark agreed that she'll meet with these students and hear them because they want to have a voice, and it was just such a lovely day. Mrs. Scanlon is in charge of the Time Travelers and Municipal Alliance. And what everybody said about Mrs. Winkle today, it was so true. One of the bonding things we had with the students, one of the questions was, who do you admire? Who is your hero? And quite a few of the students didn't pick their mom and dad, but they chose Mrs. Winkle. So she's so deserving of that honor. And of course, I have to say something to Mr. Bidnick, but he's not here. I just have to. Same as everybody else, having the students come here is the best thing about being on the Board of Education. It's just to have them come, have the parents' smiles that they're recognized in front of the Board of Education and the community. The math awards, the English awards, the soccer team, the wrestling team, Students of the Month. I hope that continues forever, and to have it done at a board meeting that's televised, it's just phenomenal. So I'm glad Dr. Pereira thinks it'll go on and on. I have to comment on his comment about the union. We appreciate the teachers coming to voice their opinions. I mean, it's part of being on the board. We need to hear from the teachers. As far as him saying we need to negotiate a contract, we did. It took us 20 months, but we negotiated a fair and equitable contract that was fair to the Board of Ed, that was fair to the teachers' union. The benefits, yes, they're a lot of money. Did we financially discuss it? The whole board was involved with that. There was a special meeting for that. So for one person coming to say he represents the community, I just don't get that. I don't understand what community he's representing, because the community I know respects the teachers, and, you know, we want to work with the teachers, which we're doing. We're working with them. We have a good relationship with them. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Armato?
Dr. Pereira, I'm going to put you on notice here. Sunday's play, 2 o'clock or 7 o'clock?
Sunday is 2 o'clock.
All right, so for the public out there, Sunday, not 7, 2 o'clock. Yeah, I got a couple people I want to congratulate tonight, myself, to all the teachers and staff and the students and the Eagle Scouts. Congratulations to you guys. Outstanding work, really a highlight of what this community is all about. Congrats to my wife Cheryl and Jack Conady on becoming new board members. Look forward to seeing you in January. It's going to be a treat. Congratulations to my seatmate here, Linda Downing, on another term. Looking forward to learning more from you. And most importantly, I think it's real easy to congratulate everybody, but I also want to pay special attention to Mr. Scanlon, to me. During the year that I was on this board, Mr. Scanlon was very helpful to me, always shared his thoughts with me, and we always worked in an open and honest way, I like to believe, and I like to think that I learned a lot. So thank you, thank you. I wish you well in your next chapter in your life. I know you're not leaving for another month, but I figured while we're doing this, we might as well talk about it. On November 11th, I attended a fundraiser for the Lacey Men's Hockey Team. What a great night. What a great night. Comedians, they were funny as, well, they were funny. And it was an environment where people brought their own food, their own drink, and they sat around on a table. And Coach D'Amico is just phenomenal, just a phenomenal coach that we have in this community who's doing a great job in running a program. And that's what he's doing. He's running a program. And I told him I would talk about this on January 6th. The Battle of Cedar Creek moves into the ice hockey rink, and they'll be playing Central Regional at the Prudential Center on January 6th. So if you can get out there on January 6th, please go to support the Men's Ice Hockey Team. Now, I do wish right now, for no other reason, but I think it's important to share this with the public, but we've got four people, five people here, so. I don't know if you're noticing it, but I am, and it's not because I sit on this side now. The community and the people are working together. It's happening. It's not happening as fast as everybody would like it to happen, but it's happening. We did a great job with the sex ed curriculum and getting that reduced. It's not where we want it to be for some people, and some people are okay with it, but that's what work and progress is, and we accomplished that. And then when you look at what, I don't know how long it's been, but I can tell you what I know for the last year, this conversation with the wrestling room. Who cares when it happened, as long as it happened and we got it done? And I think that's what people wanted, and that's what we're starting to do. So congrats to everybody that sits on this dais, that works together, puts their differences aside, and looks to move forward. I'm really impressed by it. And you know what? I'll say this. Education is key, right? We all want our kids to go to Harvard and Yale, but what's wrong with the schools that our kids go to? What's wrong with us kids go to? Naval Academy, Coastal Carolina, Purdue. I think Skip, your daughter, went to Penn, right? I mean, these are big schools, and all these kids went to Lacey Township. So yeah, I mean, where there's a will, there's a way. But you know what? The teachers can only take you, you know, they say the old phrase, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make them drink, right? Our teachers are taking them to the water, and then sooner or later, it's up to our students to decide to start drinking. And I, look, my son, St. John's University, my daughter Coastal Carolina. Where Rocco's going, to be determined. But nonetheless, you know, kids are moving forward in this community, and I think we just don't pay attention to it. And I think that's what the spotlight on our graduates is about, and that's why we do these recognitions as often as we can, because we want the community to know that we are working. We are working. But it takes a village, right? And it means it starts at home, and then it's got to transition into the schools. And if we give them a good, sound foundation, and we don't disrupt the nucleus of a family, then when they go to school, they understand that there's consequences to be paid if they're not doing well, both with the schools and what happens when they go home. And I think because we're doing such a great job of that now in Lacey, since I've been here at least, we're starting to see some of the fruits of our labor. And so to all our students who work their butts off to get where they got to get in life, we have an electrician. Let's not undermine that, right? Vocational. We have guys who are welders now, working on boats and so on and so forth. There's a lot of great things to be talking about here, and it's so easy to pinpoint the negative, but I think we're doing a real good job now identifying all the positives that are going on in this town. So those are my comments. I want to wish everybody in the community, in this board, and to the five, six people in this room, we have a happy Thanksgiving with your friends, family, and loved ones. Enjoy it, and because before you know it, we'll be talking about Christmas. So take care. Thanks for a few minutes.
Thank you. All the way down the end.
Okay, I'll keep it short. It's almost 10 o'clock. But Ed, I was upset you didn't make it back on the board, but I really appreciated the time that we have. I know we haven't spent a lot of time together because we're not on committees, but you're going to be missed. I know you're not leaving this month, but next month, month and a half. We're not kicking you out, but, you know, you will be missed. But I do want to congratulate Linda. She's been a mentor to me for two years, and I'm just happy she's back on so she can continue to do that. And I know she contributes so much to this board on a daily basis. So thank you, Linda, all the time that we spent on the phone. And I want to congratulate, of course, Jack and Cheryl. It's going to be exciting to have two new board members, looking forward to just moving forward, coming together, and looking for a good year ahead, okay? I do want to address the wrestling community, but they all left. It seems that there was some miscommunication on Facebook, and that's probably what brought them all in. In September, Donna did her report, and she did say that the rooms would be given to them, and there would be two rooms plus the room they have now. So that has not changed. So that's been since September. It didn't seem they knew that. It seemed like they just thought we threw it together in the past couple days because of the Facebook post. So I'm just asking the community, if you see something that doesn't look right on Facebook, just call us. We'll step you through and explain. I had a couple calls from some wrestling parents that their kids graduated. They saw it, and they said, what, they don't even have a room? And I said, no, that's not even the case. So sometimes it just takes a phone call, some communication. But there is going to be a line of sight through all the rooms, so hopefully they'll enjoy the space that they're given. I hope it'll satisfy their needs. It's going to be more than just a window size, from what I understand. So we're looking forward to that and, you know, supporting their teams. So I wish they were here to hear this, but, you know, we do support you, and we're big advocates of student athletes. That's it. I just want to, I'm looking forward to the play on Sunday. I'm going, so.
Thank you.
At 2 o'clock, not 7.
Thank you. I just want to add to your comments. Don't call us. Call your principals.
I was just going to say that.
Go through the chain of command. Call your principals. Call the athletic director. Don't call us. We're the last resort.
Exactly. All our friends can call us.
Friends, don't call us.
Don't call us.
Call the principals, athletic directors, Ms. Claus.
There's a chain of command on the website.
Don't call us.
Can we move on? No.
I meant the district. Call the district. How's that?
Mr. Peter.
I'm going to say it quick, because Mr. Polino, you're getting punchy down there.
No, Skip, you got to hear yourself.
I'm not going to kick Mr. Scanlon out yet. I'll wait the next meeting to say goodbye. So I hang on to you for one more meeting. Congratulations to you guys. I'm there, it's going to be a thrill working with some different aspects of it. We're getting rid of two teachers and getting a firefighter slash salesman and a gym workout. Who knows? We might get in shape, we might be able to talk better, whatever. Congratulations, Linda, also, again. On a sad note, we have, our list is unbelievable, and I know Mr. Polino did not do this purposely, but we lost an employee that retired a while ago, and we forgot to say a moment of silence, and I'd like to do that right now. For Paul Groban, he was here many years, retiring, and I worked with him when I was an employee here, and then I ran into him afterwards. We connected a couple times while I was retired. So if we got a quick moment of silence for Mr. Groban, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Real quick, as far as the wrestling thing, I wrestled here myself through the school, went through the program. It was amazing. Graduated here in 1984, many moons ago. Just one thing I need these guys to realize, you know, I'm an advocate of wrestling, but guess what? And I hope they watch this video. One of the toughest schools that wrestles in Ocean County, Southern Regional, and they're known to be state champions and win all the time. Well, guess what? Their juniors and seniors wrestle in one room, and their freshmen and sophomores wrestle in another room. They wrestle in two separate rooms. And when those rooms are full, if there's a problem, they go to a community church, which the school offers for them, which we did here. We have offered, 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 and they have not taken those recommendations whatsoever. So just keep that in the back of your mind, wrestlers, that Southern Regional separates their juniors and seniors and freshmen and sophomores every practice. That's it. Have a great Thanksgiving, and thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr..
First, I'd like to start out just by congratulating Linda Downing, Jack Conady, and Cheryl Armato on their success in the board election on November 8th. I wish them every success and hope they enjoy the opportunity to serve on the Lacey Board of Education, especially to new people, of course. I think Linda already does enjoy serving, or else she wouldn't be doing this for this many years. I enjoyed my three years here. Sometimes it's a lot of work, but it's usually a lot of fun, too. It is enjoyable. I'd like to congratulate also Matthew, the Eagle Scout, Seniors of the Month, Madeline Frisch. Kieran McGovern is listed here. He's sick tonight and couldn't come, so he will be here next month.
Yes, and we'll play his video as well.
Yeah, so we're going to recycle him. And then Vocational Senior of the Month, Kendall Evans, and the unsung hero, my favorite award, Bennett Talbot. But there's a new interesting award, too, that is in the superintendent's report, and it's in the high school, and it's the Lions Award. And it's a monthly award where it's given to a student in each grade level. And it's the letters L-I-O-N-S are the awards, and it rotates twice through the school year. And I don't know all of them, so I'm not going to try, but I do know that this month I was the inspirational award. So I'd like to congratulate Brooke McKinley, Jacob Behujin, Yaddle Ruiz, and Jared Danko. And that was in the order of freshman through senior for the inspiration award. And if you look through the superintendent's report, there's a paragraph about each one and why they've won the award. And it is kind of, it's interesting, and it's a nice award. It'll be interesting to see what the other letters are. Okay, so, and in closing on my remarks concerning the wrestling room, I was really kind of taken back when I started getting all this, because I thought, wait a minute, we came to an agreement and settled the issue in June. And of course, then you hear all the comments about the storage and so on and so forth. And I would just say that perhaps somebody should go to the wrestling coach and suggest to him that when he sees things aren't being done, he should go to the athletic director, who can then become his advocate and go to the principal. In other words, go through that chain of command and keep the people in the wrestling community informed of what's going on. It would help, it would help everyone. Maybe that would be a good idea if we could get that message to him. Thank you.
Don't call us. Ready, Mrs. Scanlon?
Well, no, but that would be, I mean, maybe he doesn't realize that, or maybe Amy Delvento doesn't realize that's her job. You know, that would be, but that would just grease the wheels of progress, and it probably would have gotten.
I agree with you there. You're right.
We make the approval, but then we don't get to control what's being done.
I agree with you there. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Okay, briefly, my comments, congratulations to all our award recipients this month, as everybody else said. I do want to, you know, Mrs. McAvoy rebutted Mr. Bidnick. You know, we had a negotiation, a long negotiation, and it was tough at times, but he mentioned six-period stipend. There was negotiations with that. There was a give-back there. The health benefits, we negotiated that. We're saving a lot of money by changing over and getting out of the state health benefits and going to private. So we do have that relationship with the LTEA that they do give, that they're not just always taking. So, you know, we have sat down with them, and we've made leaps and bounds in giving and taking. So I just want to say that it's not always a one-way road on their part. I want to congratulate Mrs. Armato and Mr. Conady, welcome aboard. Mr. Scanlon, you came up short, but there's always next year. You hear that? There's always the next year. Mrs. Downing, you know, I am ecstatic that you're going to be here for another three years, and I don't know why you have that red target on you, but people get up there and always come after you, you know? Over 30 years, 30 years. You know, the wealth of knowledge this woman has and the experience of being an administrator or a teacher, you know, as a Joe Q. Public going into some of these meetings, you know, our administration sits down and they talk to us in cryptic code, and I don't understand that code, because I wasn't in the educational field. And somebody like Mrs. Downing, Mrs. McAvoy, that I've worked with, just have that experience, and they understand that talk, and it's invaluable. There always should be somebody like Mrs. Downing and Mrs. McAvoy on a Board of Education just to break that barrier. So I am extremely pleased that you're going to be here another three years, and that I may not be, and I'm ecstatic for that. Mrs. McAvoy, I'm really sad that you didn't run, but there's always next year. And I, you know, even though you talk a lot, you're really a wealth of knowledge, too, and I appreciate for that.
And she is a mess over here, too.
I know. I'm looking at the amount of candy wrappers in front of her.
She's getting stuck there.
Yeah, so with that, let's move on. And listen, have a great Thanksgiving. We're going to move into business and get out of here. Hopefully, we'll have another bargain. Okay. So let me find my stuff. I know where I'm at. New business. Okay, was there nothing in the first part that we have? Okay, was there, uh, nothing in there in the first part that we have, we're picking up, right? What was that movement? You took it off already before. The Dean of Discipline one. That's all, that's on here, beautiful, okay. Okay, um, number one, minutes.
Move.
Second. Discussion. Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, but I have to abstain on the special meeting on November third, I was not present.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, two, list of bills.
Move.
Discussion. Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to abstain on eight-two-one-seven-three-two-five-one to Manchester Board of Ed, please.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, but I have abstain, I have to abstain on bill number nine-five-three-eight-four-three for Tim Dowd, supervisor to relative.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Scanlon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Three, transfers.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, number four, S-seventeen oh one, motion.
Motion, Peters.
Second.
Discussion. Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, five through seven, finance, uh, sale of S-RECs, use of facilities and sale of our, sale or disposal of our assets.
Move.
Uh, discussion. Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
I, uh, I need to abstain from, uh, the facility use for Lacey Lions basketball.
Thank you.
And yes for everything else.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Uh, now, eight through ten, uh, tuition and transportation, added district placements.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We're sending a student to Pine Lands?
Yes.
At forty-four, at sixty-two thousand a year?
Yes.
But what's our tuition here in Lacey?
Well, it depends on what they're coming here for.
Is this a special needs student that's going out?
Going with an aid, yeah.
He used to be at, um, Harbor School and now he's going to Pine Lands, so it is a cheaper tuition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, eleven through nineteen, we have others.
Move. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Twenty to twenty-one, policy regulations.
I'll make that one, I'll second. Yep.
Discussion.
Uh, I just want to, um, remind everybody that the conduct of board meeting, we're on a second read. So, our meetings next time for public will be seven o'clock and not seven-thirty.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion?
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, twenty-two, twenty-three, HIBs.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes, on twenty-two, on twenty-three, no, on eight-eight-three-five. And, like, is there more in number twenty-three? Yes, yes on everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Moving on to B, section B, donations.
Second.
Discussion. Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Item C, programs and curriculum.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Ropa.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, D, professional days and workshops.
I'll move that.
A second.
Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, and, um, I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Mahar, Jack Mahar, is, uh, put in for retirement, he will be greatly missed in this district.
Uh, Mrs. Downing?
Yes.